Alright, we got officially 7:02. And it is the August 18th of 2020, City of Portland, town and council meeting. We call the meeting in order. I'm going to mute everybody and rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Two republics, with its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting is standing back for very height. Uh, first up, we have the opportunity for public comments and we reminder, yes, the comments are limited to three minutes length. Now, I'm sorry, can we have a before this start, give the moment of reflection? And honor of Chief, Chief Quiney, he was a long time, lifetime member of the community, long time, do you, Chief, do you do that for, at the moment?
Uh, yep, we were, so Bruce Peckler has asked, so we take the moment of silence for those that did not hear former police chief, Chief Quiney, past the web. And we'd like to take the moment of silence to recognize. Thank you, everyone. And there's this impact on the, it may be, it was pretty broad and there's a lot of people who were, had, had a bad day when they heard the news. Next up, we have the opportunity for public comments, ask if anybody would like to speak. Uh, same as last week, please put into the group chat that you would like to speak and we're gonna ask you to place your name in there. And the chat is set so that only I will get messages. So if you're going through the meeting, if you're looking to discuss anything in terms of the group chat, it goes just to the host, that meaning. And we will have the opportunity for public comments at the end. I'm not seeing any names coming forward. We can move on, may the report. Uh, me, I'm gonna essentially cede my time, we have two guests today who are going to be speaking, agenda items number one and two. And I think it's a very advantageous for the community to hear what they have to say. Uh, so to move forward, minutes from our last meeting, where the motion to consider filing the minutes as is. Jackie Chapman, second, Bill Carpenter. Uh, council members, please turn your microphones on for votes. So you can do a verbal and also a weighted. Uh, any corrections or potential camp, uh, changes to the minutes for the August 4th weekend? And seeing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, can I say something? You get a chance?
Yes, Bill Carpenter, yes, Bill.
Uh, I just like to, I don't know if we got item agenda, but I want to, can we have an update on, uh, Paint the Blue? I know you sent an email off to us. Can we just give an update when you get a chance? I don't know if it's gonna be, you want to add an agenda item or no? I know you sent the email, I just wanna, just give us an update and see where we're at. I noticed some, some dates discussed.
Yeah, no, I could add them, discuss at the end. Alright, minutes are approved, we get to item number one. It says discussion on City Portland, Fred Pierce from, uh, City Portland Communications Department is present. And he has asked, Fred, that this is his second time attending a council meeting this year, to share with the greater Portland community what's happening on City Portland with regards to preparations for the fall semester. Fred Pierce, take it away. Oh, hang on. I might have to unmute you, give me a second, Fred. There you go.
Okay, alright, we're good. Um, well folks, as most of you, as some of you may know, um, this is the weekend that, um, that the students start coming back. Uh, we have changed move-in weekend to move-in week. And we've scheduled the students who are living on campus, uh, specific times. So we can space them out, limit the numbers in buildings with the families coming in, uh, over the course of the week. And, uh, then we imagine that toward the end of this, do this next weekend, a lot of the off-campus students will be, uh, will be moving in. Uh, we have been messaging the students and letting them know that, uh, that this is going to be a semester like no other. Um, hopefully, we have dampened their expectations for the normal social interaction that they, uh, they do. We are, we are very confident that if the students abide by everything that we have put in place, uh, that we'll be able to get through this, this semester safely. Uh, as you know, nineteen to twenty-two-year-olds don't always do what you want them to do. We have made it clear that all of the, uh, that not following any of the rules that we have put out there. And it all pertained to social distancing, wearing masks, hygiene, and not congregating in, uh, in large groups. And obeying the city's twenty-five-person limit for gatherings and the social host agreements, which we think is, is going to be. And that any of these things will get them in trouble to the extent that it could lead to suspension. We found that the threat of suspension had a significant detriment, detrimental effect last semester. And we're strengthening it this year. Uh, you should be, City of students, unless they are members of the same household, in other words, the same group of people living together, they should be wearing masks and social distancing. Um, we have, um, almost all of our students have completed their pre-level screen, which is a screening that, uh, looks for risk factors to warrant test them. Any risk factors discovered immediately requires, uh, quarantine. If they test positive, then it's isolation for two weeks. We have all of our students who are coming from other countries or who are from other states that are on the New York's watch list, are already quarantining. Most of them are at home, at home quarantining. Ten of them are on campus, on West Campus, in our quarantine and isolation facility. None of them, um, are, are thought to be illness, this is a precautionary quarantine, which acquired by, by the law and by, by our policy. We have sixty-four beds in that facility, we are working hard to try to, to make more. We have had, um, and we have encouraged people to, if they can get an all-online course for the fall, to opt out of their housing contract. We've been allowing that and encouraging that, try to reduce the density. Um, fortunately, a lot of the landlords locally will, will not be able to do that. So I'm sure similar in spring, we'll have some, some students who, uh, who are doing their classes online, but living in, in Portland because they're locked into the recent year. Good news this week, um, is that we, New York State's rates of infection are very low, among the lowest in the United States, showing that the kind of precautions we're taking do work. Our entire plan is modeled after that put forth by Governor Cuomo and, uh, the state health department. Uh, which just, uh, yesterday gave approval for the reopening of gyms and fitness centers in, uh, New York State, which means we will be able to open up the Student Life Center, which, uh, will give our students other activities to do. And we are very busy trying to come up with non-collective activities so they have something to keep them involved and engaged beyond just their, their school. Uh, you may, when you're on campus, uh, this coming week, it's orientation week. We provide, kids, students are divided up. Within the residence halls, they, um, we've created the equivalent of a, uh, of a family unit. So a household unit. And those are the students that, if you see them in a, in organized activities, like they'll be playing can jam and, uh, um, frisbee, um, not beer pong, um, on the quad. Um, and they'll be supervised and if they're not wearing face coverings, that means we've got them separated and they aren't part of the same unit. Um, it's really been extraordinary effort on the part of a lot of, uh, a lot of staff and faculty on campus. And, um, we appreciate the cooperation we've gotten from the city and the city police. We have a communication that will be hand-delivered to off-campus students. That's being issued jointly by city and the university. Letting them know of not only the city, what can befall them if they, they don't follow city ordinances, but for what the consequences are if they don't follow all the rules, the guidelines that we put forth. Um, it's gonna take, it's gonna be fourteen weeks of continuous monitoring on our part. As I mentioned last time I was here, we do have a website link to where anybody can report, mention them. You see large gatherings of students, if you get reports that there are the kids downtown congregating, the waves, that aren't healthy and that are unsafe, let us know. Um, and as many details as you can get will help us track down these unholy and unkind ones. Um, you know, in this, you know, we have the saying from years back, it takes a village. It takes, it takes a community. Um, and that's the City of Portland community as well as, uh, the City of Portland community. And, uh, we, we certainly wanna know what our students are up to. I appreciate everybody's help because, uh, it's in all of our interests to, uh, keep everybody safe.
Good, thank you, Fred, and we appreciate the fact that college is expecting and open to receiving feedback immediately if there are issues or concerns. Uh, one of the questions that's come forward, Greek life activities, are they controlled and handled? I think you may have addressed some of this last time, but, uh, organizations and I think it's worth reinforcing that there is campus oversight with regard to Greek life, Greek life and other organization groups.
Absolutely. Um, the way, it would not be, well, there's not supposed to be many of the types of gatherings that one would typically associate with Greek organizations. Um, everything is going to be cleared back and changed, they're gonna be held to limits. They're not gonna be, Greek organizations, for example, are not going to be able to rush in person the way they have to try to recruit new members. They're not gonna be able to hold these Greek gatherings, these Greek parties, to try to get people together. If they are, if a house is inviting people over, and sometimes it's difficult to tell because there are some Greek, some houses, um, I think there were couple sororities, that have quite a few people living under the same roof, they're considered the same household. But if they're having additional people coming in, then it becomes an issue. It becomes a problem and, uh, we wanna know about it. And the Greek organizations can be held to a pretty strict standard. In some senses, they're more vulnerable than groups of students who are just hanging out on their own because they have, we have, um, because they're recognized by the college, there are sanctions we can place upon them. And they also have to have a national affiliation. And as the national organizations have demonstrated in the past, um, they don't mess around if they find that, uh, an org, especially nowadays, when it could potentially create a serious high cost.
They're doing, trying to try.
Yeah, I couldn't hear all of it.
You got it. Council, any other questions for Mr. Pierce?
Uh, Bruce Peckler. Uh, John, you're first.
Uh, first off, Fred, it's been a few years, uh, hope things are good with you.
Good to see ya.
Fred, what tricks the circuit breaker? If you know what I mean.
That's a, that's really good. We, we stay awake at night trying to get, uh, wondering about that one. We do have, um, we do have metrics. Um, it's not a matter of just one, one data point which determines you're, you're now older. I mean, clearly, we have, um, we have sixty-four currently available quarantine and isolation beds. At some point, when we're getting near there, and if we're, we're looking at the nature of, of the incidences we're seeing, and if, um, if, we're looking at, uh, other issues such as the, the, the rate locally or statewide, is the infection rate is starting to rise? Um, we couple these things together, clearly, we can't go over our sixty-four bed quarantine. When we get close to that, we're gonna have to follow it. Uh, because we, we obviously can't, can't, we, we have to be able to provide to these students and we can't be put in a position where, where we're not. So, um, we're, that's why it's so critical that if we wanna finish this semester, we very badly do, we need to keep our students from getting infected and infected enough.
Thank you. And then we go to Bruce Peckler and then Bill Carpenter?
Yeah, hi Fred, thanks for coming back, um, a second time, can you hear me okay, Fred? Yes, yes, okay. Thanks for coming back for a second time and, and going through this, I've been getting some phone calls from people that, uh, the community, by and large, the community, well, excuse me, when they come back, the, the energy level goes up tenfold and it's just, they add so much to the community. And this year is gonna be so different from every other return, it's just, you know, it's hard to sort of imagine what it's gonna look like. So, thanks for coming to explain what the college has tried to do, we really appreciate that. Um, do you have any idea about how many students you think are gonna be coming to Portland in the fall?
Well, right now, we have, um, three thousand that will be living on campus. And then we, uh, cooler has, has dropped, we have, as I said, seen some people cancel their, their housing contracts, which we encourage. Um, which leaves us probably accounted for commuters. We've probably got close to another three thousand living in off-campus sites.
Okay, alright. Um, and you, you touched on, alright, and I, I, I just wanna reinforce that. With the mask, uh, I, I know that if you're walking around a community or in the stores, the people in Portland are fantastic, I mean, the folks here get it, you know, they know understand the mask is about looking out for the other person and we're looking out for each other. I went to the store this weekend, almost everybody had the mask on, I, I walked downtown a couple times and I caught, I had some people and everybody has masks or they're, you know, six, seven, eight feet away. So that's gonna be really crucial and I guess any chance you get to reinforce that in schools because many of them are gonna come from communities like ours where people, uh, you know, they get it. And some might be coming from areas where it's, it's not really a priority. And, um, I'm not sure what you want there. Um, if you would, uh, just sort of reinforce that whenever you get a chance. Of how, that's how we're doing it in Portland, people are wearing the mask. People want the students to come back here, but there is, there are concerns. And, um, I just, I'll leave it at that, I guess.
Still, no, I would, I can't say that I think, it's, it's, I've seen that myself in Portland. And I think it's great, not only because it's the right thing to do to be in a safe environment, because it sends a message to the students who are coming in, that's what this community is like. That's why, as we, we're reaching out to student leaders, student government, student athletes, members of clubs, performing arts, because we need to get them on board, we need peer role models. We need to have the students that, because we know all faculty and staff are gonna be wearing the masks, we're wearing them, we've been wearing them for months. But we need to get those student leaders to buy them. And, um, for, for the most part, the ones that, the conversations I've been involved in, we have. I'm anticipating, the critical point is gonna be the first couple weeks, when we've gotta get, it's acclimated in a flash to what they've gotta be done before anything, anything happens. We're luckier than the, the universities that are trying to open in many other states because New York's infection rate is so low. And the huge, the vast majority of our students are from New York State, so they're used to following this. Um, that being, you know, they, they haven't seen their friends in a while and that's what young people do, is they wanna socialize. So we're trying to give them opportunities to socialize safely. Um, but it's, uh, there's a lot of people working, a lot of very creative people working on some things. Your mayor is one of them. Um, I think, as a matter of fact, we're probably gonna be putting a giant mask on the dragon statue down by the stadium.
That's a great idea.
We're trying to, to make it clear that this is, this is the way it's, it's gotta be.
Yeah, that's a great idea, okay. Thanks, Fred, and, uh, you know, we appreciate what you guys are doing, what you folks are doing, and thank you.
Bill Carpenter?
Yeah, I work at Cornell University and Ithaca just closed today, I don't know if you've heard about that.
I did, I did.
Are there some contingency plans that are still closing or anything like that planned in the future for you guys?
We, yes, we have a lot of contingency plans that are closing. As I said before, there's no one magic point that we reach and we, unless it's, you know, our quarantine limit. But we could decide to call it well before we reach that limit just because we're seeing that it's, um, you know, enough students are testing positive, there's enough issues being created where we feel it's becoming an unsafe situation. It is absolutely not in our interest to have a disaster on our campus. And, uh, you know, we wanna keep our students, our students wanna, wanna come back. And pardon the problem, and Ithaca has this problem too, when you go to an all-online format, they've still got a community filled with students. There, those kids aren't leaving town, they're staying there. So, we're hoping we can keep them here and we can keep them better engaged so we can keep an eye on their behavior and, uh, you know, we're, um, we've, like everybody probably listening to this and watching this right now, we've, we've got our fingers crossed for that. Takes a lot of hard work, but, um, it's gonna have, it's gonna take a lot of people to cooperate as well.
Thank you. Gee, and I saw Tom Michael, would you like to add to that?
Uh, yes, uh, Fred, uh, would you mind coming back in one of our meetings in September for, uh, another, another update?
I'd be really like you guys, I got no problem.
Well, maybe we'll make sure that you're first on the agenda, how's that?
Oh, that's great, that's great. Thank you.
Very good, council, any further questions? Fred, we do appreciate your presence here tonight and the ongoing work behind the scenes. And Yasko City is collaborating with City, we're looking for it to be a safe move-in and a safe start to the semester to lead to a safe community throughout the year. Um, and as a reminder, we do have code enforcement and police officers to go door-to-door, typically during the move-in timeframe. Um, and they are doing the same this year, also looking to share information about expectations above and beyond what we share annually. And, uh, for council, I will be out and about in terms of neighborhoods and knocking on, uh, just introducing myself and saying hello to some people and if I see some things I'm concerned about, I, class, it did the same thing this past spring and April. And there was some concerns that came to my attention, drove around town, just stopped and talked to some people, were hanging out in their yards and said, hey, there's a perception of reality, make sure that people that what they see, their perception of what you're doing matches the reality of your expectation. And council members, I would encourage you in particular, um, you can do a great job of getting to know your neighbors and the people in your ward. And the next two weekends, more so the weekend of the 28th, I believe this weekend, a lot of on-campus students with instructors. But in terms of next weekend, it's good for you to get to know people as well. And of course, practicing social distancing while you're doing it. Uh, Fred Pierce, thank you. Have a great year. And we'll go on talking about the older, taller, bigger kids in terms of education. I'd like to have the pleasure of introducing the new superintendent for the City of Portland Large School District, Bob Edwards. Hey, Mr. Edwards, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome home.
Thank, thank you, council members, I appreciate it, it's good to be here in front of you. Um, and I think, uh, that, so we already hinted to, uh, let's see what Mr. Pierce talked about, his nineteen and twenty-three-year-olds and, uh, the team I'm working for is working on our three-year-olds through nineteen, so, so, uh, we're working on all the protocols for our youngsters and making sure that they're, uh, ready to roll. And learn a lot about social distancing and learn a lot about the protections that protective equipment should give up, particularly masks. So I'll just highlight a bit, bits of our program, um, and what we're looking for. And, um, if you're a, if you're a parent in our community, you may have been receiving some phone calls from me and your school messenger and some other communications, so I've been working on getting those out from the team. And, uh, we were required, as you know, from, uh, by, by the governor, to host three public community webinars and we completed our third tonight. And also, uh, we're required to hold a mandatory faculty, full staff meeting with the state health, um, last week and then tomorrow, all of our building principals are having meetings with their staff. And those will honestly be continual as we now work on the final few weeks before the, the full year. So if I were to highlight just our intention as a leadership group going into the summer and thinking through all of the guidance as we received it, um, in late July and then in early August, um, from the governors announced on August 7th. Um, all of our work focused around meeting the needs of our families and students and, uh, meeting their requests. So we talked about a variety of different plans and a variety of different, um, calculations that communities or schools in the region were using to figure out how they would bring kids back in, in the buildings. And, uh, we started from a data perspective and really wanted to think it through, um, with that mindset. We asked our families to commit to and give us some indicators on whether they want remote learning as an option or in-person learning as an option. And those were two, two mandates, we, we had to meet those, we had to have plans for those for the Board of Regents regulations and recommendations for it. So we started with that data commitment and, uh, as that data began flowing in, we recognized really quickly that some of our families wanted remote learning and, uh, felt that that was the safest and best learning environment for their, their student. And, uh, we began designing a program around that. And at the same time, looking at the number of students and families who were asking in-person. A challenge on the in-person side was to look at all of the regulations, particularly- particularly around social distancing, to begin to space out our, our buildings and look at what a classroom actually looks like. So many of you have been in our buildings and, you know, in a variety of buildings that we have. And some classrooms typically have, you know, 20, 25 student desks or workstations or tables. And that quickly became not a reality, not a possibility for us to maintain. So our leadership team, all of our building principals, literally went through their buildings, space by space, classroom by classroom. And we counted out and spaced desks. And we built a capacity sheet, knowing exactly how many students we could fit in every space. We stretched spaces, we thought creatively about how to reuse spaces for different purposes. And when we came down to it and looked specifically at our data, um, of the students that wanted in-person and those that wanted to vote, as a leadership team, we addressed one question. And that first question was, how can we fit students that wanted in-person instruction into our, um, how can? And, um, we developed a number of solutions around that. And some of those solutions include, you know, changing the space that we're using. Some of those solutions include, um, you know, shifting some staff and asking people to do things that are temporary, that we know, that are outside of our normal practices. And, uh, we came to the conclusion that we could fit all of our students who request in-person learning five days per week. One of the things in that conversation that we really were proud of, and that, that I think is really a factor for our community, it's a big general conversation tonight, I imagine we're all in all the time. But that scenario does help us with childcare as well. And when we were thinking about any other models, when we were thinking about not going five days per week and any, you know, there were a variety of early costs that many district communities have. Um, all of those do stress our families out and challenge our childcare scenario. Other words, you know, whether it's not a clear pattern that a family can follow or whether it's only a part day of the week or, or just a few days of the week instead of a whole week. So those challenges are really relevant for us. I, I think, and we keep talking about how, you know, childcare is really, you know, it is a national issue. And it always has been, but this scenario has really brought it forward. That as soon as, you know, schooling is not happening and childcare is, all sorts of work. I'm really challenging our faculty, who are our youngsters. So we think we, we have helped solve that. And our conversation has now really focused on rebuilding all of our master schedules. Our principals are working on that. And, uh, but, but it's more so really hyper focused now on our safety. We're working on our safety protocols and building all of those things in place. In that regard, our Board of Education met last night and we adopted a revised calendar for the 2020-21 school year. And that revised calendar just shifted a few, um, days at the beginning of the year. And that, that shifted, we shifted our staff development from November and really brought that back to September. And then we took one student learning day away and it still keeps us in the neighborhood 180 day range. And, um, created another staff workday at the front end of the year. So for all students, we will begin remote and in-person learning September 14th, I remember. And the four days prior, so those four days right after Labor Day, that's September 8th night and 11th, um, will be days for our staff to work through all of the scenarios. Practice what our, what our school year is going to look like. The practice for our entry protocol look like, practice how we, um, troubleshoot and problem solve and, and, uh, function with any of the deliberate flexible things that we'll be functioning with this school year. And so that'll give us those, uh, that time at the beginning of the school year. The other thing that I spoke with our board about and that, uh, that I launched out today to everybody is we've been in some deep, uh, conversation around re-leading to practice. And for all schools in New York State, for all schools in the country, and, you know, we're, we're all watching the news and witnessing the trends that are happening in Georgia right now and a number of other states are starting to open a school. And one of the things that, that is a reality for all of us is, you know, we may have to, um, transition to all remote learning. We may have to transition at some point for a day. We may have to transition at some point for a week. We may have to transition for longer. And those things are mostly out of our control. So the concept of practicing, being intentional about that, we're being plus. And, uh, we've explored that and think it's a really good idea. So what we launched today is, uh, is just all of our families to know that on September 25th and October 9th and October 30th, those are going to be, um, remote learning days for all students. And we wanted our families to be aware of that, so that's, that's why we got the messaging out. We wanted our families to be aware of that, so again, they can prepare for childcare on those days. But those days are opportunities for us as a staff and, and our students and families to practice remote learning. To give it a shot and know that on a Thursday, we're, you know, our in-person learners are going to be in-person. And our remote learners are going to be remote on a Thursday. And then on a Friday, can we transition to a part year remote? We're gonna maintain for all of our remote learners and all of our in-person learners are, are scheduled just like a first month, like, uh, you know, for example, you're up in the first period at eight o'clock in the morning and you're in social first class and second period starts at nine o'clock and you're in your DLA block. Um, and the day goes on like that way. So we'll have those free practice days. We're also committed to, um, surveying our population to make sure our students, our staff and our families after those practice days to just say, how do we go? What can we do better? What, what can we do differently? Um, so we're hopeful that, uh, those will give us real opportunities to be, to practice. The other thing, so just on a few safety protocols. Um, masks are mandatory on our school buses and in our buildings. And, um, we're going to be diligent in our expectation and our follow-through on mask requirement. That's for all people and all visitors, um, a lot of very limited visitors here in our building. For all, anybody who's in our building, there'll be a mask requirement. We have put into play and we're going to work with our staff to make sure that also we follow our expectation. But we do think breaks, masks breaks out those, those will be done at, at certain times when, you know, in some classrooms, when it's independent, silent work and everybody got their socially distanced station. Um, you know, by the direction of the teacher, they'll have a break mask. Certainly during, um, work in the eligibility school, so we serve lunch and breakfast to all our students. So during those times, everybody will be seated in a socially distanced classroom and, uh, they'll have a mask off at the evening. And, um, then when we have opportunities, all of the days, you know, provides opportunities to be outside. So outdoors, weather permitting, and, uh, maybe some, some, uh, staff members in weather is not permitting. But when we're outdoors, we will be, uh, there'll be opportunities to be, um, with masks on. Um, if I were to add just the last bit, and I know there probably will be some questions. Um, we have been, you know, transportation is a big challenge to this guidance into all schools right now. So, uh, the transportation guidance thing, you know, same thing, requirement masking and, and, uh, and, uh, we have asked, um, for our families if they can support us to, uh, by transporting their own children. So if anybody can transport their own children, that helps our capacity. And, uh, so, so we've had a very good preseason at this point. That does mean that we anticipate our buses, so we'll have the same number of bus runs, but we'll be transporting less kids. So the same number of runs, we can't, you know, it's not a capacity bus, so we'll have the same number of kids. We'll have an increase in lockers and we'll have an increase in parents dropping off. So some of that, uh, you know, in the past, those costs are really valuable for us. And particularly this year, you know, that service will, will be something that would have extraordinary value for all of our, um, kids. Um, and, uh, you know, then we'll be working on entry protocols to get kids into our buildings and, uh, working on all of those learnings and, uh, we'll extend it with our protocols for masking. I think that's, I think I covered everything that, for, for right now, but any questions for the day?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Edwards? So Tom Michael.
Bob, do you have enough, uh, food each for those students that may not have the opportunity to, uh, bring off with them?
Uh, thank you for that question. Uh, we are required to, to supply that for students that, uh, that come to us and don't have that. So we'll have disposable masks and, um, and, you know, other, other required things. Um, you know, there will be some students with shields and some other, um, other protective threat now. So we are required to add that. We've put in a big order, one of the, you know, the big challenges again, uh, some time. Um, but a lot of school districts competing in their ordering of massive amount, um, supplies and teaching these particular. And, uh, so the BOCs, regional BOCs that have helped in some ways, where they've gotten, um, bid in going. So we're, we're able to jump onto that. So we've made a big order, our first order, it was really, um, we took our full calculation for the full school year of what was recommended for purchasing for duty staff and, you know, all of the people in our building. And, uh, we put that in a quarter and just made the first quarter bid early on so that we're anticipating that with delivery coming in, being ready to operate that and making the second quarter, um, over at the same time.
Oh, good, very good. Thank you. Uh, Bruce Tiger.
Yeah, uh, first of all, welcome back to Portland, you know, congratulations. I've called you a couple of different times, but I know how busy you've been since day one preparing for this monumental task ahead of you. So, um, thanks for coming tonight and allowing us to find out and just to find out what you're gonna do. Um, I think you've covered everything. My only, my only question is, I'm sure you're going through. When those few days that you're having practice, which is, I think, a fantastic idea, are you providing, are you providing meals to all those students at home? Those few days, you draw breakfast and lunch, and that's, that's great. And you're gonna have some filed a schedule, so they're gonna be getting lunch at a different time? How is that gonna, how's that gonna work?
Yeah, thank you for that question and, and thanks for, uh, welcoming back. It's good to see you. Um, so our food service director is an amazing person. He, uh, has, has all the confidence in the world and, uh, so we've had some great conversations. We do have a number of options. And we were delivering food and providing that, you know, to the posers in March and April and May and June and throughout the summer. Um, so two, two ideas that are circling right now. Um, we do have the option or the possibility that for those days, on Thursdays, we can provide the food. That's for Friday, so kids can take that home. Um, there might also be some other options. So we're gonna like play through all the different scenarios and then what makes the best sense? What's best for families? What's best for, for us in terms of like delivery and that? But yeah, we're, we're required to, we provide that breakfast and lunch every day, Monday through Friday. And, uh, we'll be riding around on those days.
So students, when they're eating in, um, even in high school, will they all be eating in their classrooms? Will food be brought to the rooms or, and for students, you know, go out, you know, six feet apart and go through a line and get the food out? I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's a good call. Um, so students, all, all meals will be in classrooms. So our cafeterias, right now, are totally repurposed. They honestly, some, some of those are becoming music rooms because the music required around social distancing is 12 feet apart, that's it. So some of those large spaces are being used for many other purposes, instructional purposes. Um, so right now, I think where we've landed on, particularly, we're, uh, we're gonna have hubs in our building. So for example, at the junior school in high school, we're working on six different entry points. And our protocol for entry will be students enter and there's a hub, a feed hub right there where they pick up their breakfast head to their homeroom or advisory. And then they have it there. And then once, when lunchtime comes for us, same deal, they'll exit and go to the hub. It's won't be the cafeteria, but it'll just be a delivery point, you know, full five. And then they'll come back from the hub right to their, um, right to their classroom. So that looks like the reality of how it works.
Well, I have to say, you guys, students, be proud of, by everything you can possibly think of. Hope you have a great second school year.
Thank you.
Bill Krampfender?
Uh, thanks for coming back to Portland. It's good to see a hometown boy come back once school is over. It's been, uh, I've seen you around before and it's great to have you back. Um, about sports, the community doesn't know about sports. Is it, it's a deal with that, studies sports up to the bar and all that?
So yeah, great, great question. And, and I apologize that you hung out with my brother Dan, but, uh, appreciate you mentioning it. Um, so, so sports, a couple of things. Over the summer, the Federation, which is the New York State group that runs all of the athletics for the state, Federation came out with a six scenario plan, so there were six different scenarios they had. And, uh, all of those scenarios, you know, were different in terms of when sports may start, how they might look. There were some scenarios with seasons being different than they normally are. Um, shortly thereafter, we got word from the Federation, just, and the only guidance we had so far was that fall sports could not be doing before September 21st. It's typical for all of us that our fall sport season starts like middle of August and then we get all of those practices in or games officially start generally right around Labor Day and sometimes even before. Um, so right now, we're just in a holding pattern. September 21st is still our guiding date that, uh, no sports, um, no organized activity either. So we can't do any preseason, we can't have our coaches out there with their team doing any organized exercise or organized training. Um, so we're still waiting on that guidance. If I were, you know, I, one of the scenarios that's been floated and talked more about more recently is a condensed, um, a condensed format of three seasons, all starting in January and then June and October. So it kinda looks like a season in January and February, which would be basketball and less learning, a few of those sports. And then a March-April season, which would include sports that typically might take place in the fall. And then a May-June season, which would be, you know, sports that typically be in spring. Um, but there's honestly all, that's just, I haven't heard anything official about that yet. Those are just some thoughts that are out there. And that was one of the scenarios from the Federation that seems to continue to be, to be, I haven't heard it officially.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Edwards? Uh, thank you for being here in Portland's settlement. Welcome back to Portland. We're looking forward to continuing to work with you. If you need, give us a call.
I appreciate it and I appreciate all your work as a, as a council and I think we're focused on you, Bob.
Thank you. Have a good evening. As far as you can see, there's a lot of conversations, many steps being taken at all levels, particularly in education and district through the city to, uh, make sure we're keeping people safe. And it's good, just sharing information and making sure everybody's aware of the steps that are being taken. Agenda item number three, resolution approved additional outdoor space for businesses through October 31st. We have a request from the Red Jug Club. Uh, so there was, this was a request that was granted a couple of months ago. Seems to be functioning well, like to entertain and mostly to consider John Bennett, 7th, Tom Michael's discussion. And then, although I was in favor of saying, Dave, aye?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Pass. Hey Mayor, Mayor, before you go too much further down the line, do we need to add a, uh, agenda item on the chamber, um, poll banners?
Yes, thank you. He's gonna listen to you. Hold on a second, oh. Put that at the end. Thank you for the reminder.
Okay.
Now, this is, uh, so, agenda item number three. I've had a request from, uh, New York City that has been in contact with Hasting Room. Unfortunately, my conversation with Sandro was very brief, this was in the last day and I don't have full details. So I would ask counsel to entertain, uh, discussion. So let's entertain a resolutions approved additional outdoor space. towards the tasting room in New York Dabel, limited to the two parking spaces on Main Street directly in front of their businesses. And I entertain a mostly to consider, John Bennett, second, Bill Tarkinger, and I would add to the resolution contingent upon uh review by police and fire, make sure that we're doing things safely. So we're a little bit out of step in terms of process, but this is a conversation that just came up and knowing that we are not meeting again until September first. Uh, we're going a little bit backwards, but we might be able to just a couple of local bits of discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mostly carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, resolution to retain the services of home development to provide from Hope and Grant Administration, pretending to have an agreed is supposed to nine hundred thousand dollars. Homer Plaza restoring your grant at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars is mostly to consider. John Bennett, second, Tom Michaels discussing. So there were two grants that were sought and awarded. This is one of the two. And the administration is fairly willing. Uh, he's got a great relationship with Homer. Are there any questions regarding this agenda item? There are none. Oh, Tom Tarkinger.
Uh, it's not a question, it's disclosure. Do you want me to wait?
Nope, now is the appropriate time.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I just wanna disclose that I am on the planning committee for Portland Reuse. Uh, some people may have noticed in the paper that Portland Reuse has been in conversations with uh the unions about potentially future uh occupation of some of the space in there. Um, as per my conversation with people council, uh, that shouldn't be a conflict of interest for this, but I did wanna make sure I disclose that information.
Good job. Further discussion. All those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mostly carries. And given some press, uh, definitely there's some good motion going forward in terms of that project, a very large company and looking forward to seeing it return to a productive use within the community. Agenda item number five, resolution authorized to Portland City Police Department, entered through contractors, I trust, file methods for a new live scan system. Total cost twenty thousand five hundred seventy dollars, share with ten thousand dollars, uh, department, uh, Chief Justice reimbursement grant. It must be approved and signed prior to January twenty twenty one, a face of potential of the government across the U.S., pending sale of company, mostly to consider. So Tarkinger, second, support by Tom Michaels discussing. Good stuff.
I'm happy.
Go ahead, raise your hand. Uh, Deputy Chief, just wondering, do you have that money, the ten thousand five hundred in your budget to pay for that?
Um, this year, um, probably not. Um, we do not need money until twenty twenty one. Um, it has been submitted in the twenty twenty one budget, um, for approval and consideration. Um, I did talk to a couple of council people today and with everything going on, our budget, um, also the additional cuts that were were taken, um, at the beginning of COVID. Um, it's a pretty thin budget this year. I'm not saying there's not, um, but we'll have to see how the rest of the year plays out. And then ultimately, uh, Matt and Lori are the ones that plonked holes in budgets where we've gone over with money left in other budget lines. But I will say that I'm probably gonna have to reach out to Brian about serious doing some money, um, in the next couple of months because a couple of lines are depleted already. So. How do you see the council with the, um, and for the general public, uh, with the live scan system, what's the value to this? The live scan system is, um, how we process defendants, um, it's completely digital. Um, eight years ago, we used Polaroid cameras and ink and paper for fingerprints and we used an ice cream system which, um, ran criminal histories. Uh, this system, um, will be our third system, about eighty-five years, technology gets outdated and we'll have to update. This will be the second one that I've applied for a grant for in the past ten years. Um, essentially, um, when we arrest somebody, we will pick them in, uh, we will take their fingerprints, tape in all their personal data, uh, take their photograph and it gets sent into DCJS, um, and compared, uh, with records, existing records to, um, other data systems. So if we arrest an individual, uh, say we arrest Brian Tobin and he says he's Paul Tony and we take their fingerprints and send them in, it'll come back and say, this isn't Paul Tony, this is Brian Tobin. And we will get criminal history checks of anything, um, this, without this system, um, we would essentially be unable to arrest people and process them. Um, Bloom County is the hub. Um, I have included Dave Stathis and Dave Barrera. Um, we've been, um, attending various meetings. Bloom County is doing the, um, the testing of the system, they're very confident in it, we're waiting for DCJS approval on it, which we do not see a problem with. And, um, if we don't, since we use Bloom as a hub, if we went with a different company, which these are very limited, there's only two that I know of. And the other system is very complicated, um, and the system that we are currently using from the local trust, um, has not even entered into the picture yet. Um, if we don't use the same system that Bloom does, we will not be part of the hub. And then the hub links dozens of communities and counties across the state, um, so the information is shared. Um, if we did not belong to a hub like Bloom, uh, we would be going decades into the past as far as data sharing. No, see, I I understand all that and I'm not someone I'm against it. I know technology is is increasing and and changing constantly and I fully agree that that's something that can be needed and be useful. So I'm gonna strongly recommend, especially for next year's budget, that you make sure that you, if you have to replace something and take something out for that time five to do it because you know the whole river running this year, um, we're maybe gonna hold next year. And personally, no, I'm I'm not looking forward to this fall, um, for the budget hearings. But again, every 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 department's gonna have to know that the, it's not the same. Especially them to like firmly believe that the government is gonna cut our state income by twenty percent. So that's four hundred thousand dollars immediately gone for revenue, so, um, you find something that you can be, you can take out of the budget for that amount of money and I'm fine with it, okay?
But I think, I think, can I say something? Oh, I I think Paul's been very fiscally responsible with his gear fund and everything. I think he is, uh, pretty intuitive with his budget and what he can do. So I think there's no issue there. I think Paul's gonna find something to cut and to work with us on that.
The only reason, um, this is coming up at this time is I shared the email from Bloom County. Um, as with technology, when something becomes, um, in a high demand, people buy it up. Um, and if we can enter into this agreement with I trust, um, before twenty twenty one, we have until June thirty of twenty twenty one to install it. But if we wait until twenty twenty one, we may see a a significant increase of five to ten thousand dollars increase in this quote. And I'm trying to avoid that. Um, yes, it's gonna be hard enough to come up with a to ten five, um, but it's better to come up with ten five than fifteen or twenty.
Tom Tarkinger.
So I'm one of the council members who spoke with Deputy Chief earlier today a little bit about this. Um, I certainly am excited about the idea of proposing and moving forward with something for twenty twenty one project that we haven't seen. Um, and we did discuss the idea of encountering, uh, some money as well as trying to find it. And I understand this year's budget is quite immediate. Um, one of the things we talked about that I wanted to just make sure we clarified or discussed as well is that uh, there are some explicit changes to how processing happens next year, if I understand right. And this, uh, system would allow you to come into compliance with that, which our current one does not. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, DCJS has come out with a number of different requirements for the new system. Um, one of the most notable is palm prints. Um, for for decades, we've never been able to take palm prints, we've never considered taking palm prints, um, unless it was a a specific case which required it. Um, the current system does not have a palm print leader, um, and that's one of the requirements that we will have to have and this I trust will have it. There are other, um, things that, um, I can't mention right off the top of my head, but, um, DCJS, when we put out these grants, they're very specific about what these requirements are. And I know the palm prints is one of the big things that no other system can take and, um, this one can. So in order to be compliant, we are in this system.
Further discussion. Well, Paul, I pretty much answered my questions, uh, as we all recall, we dropped the, uh, uh, the current city's computer system to, uh, uh, we gave them an upgrade here a couple of years ago. Uh, it's just just fair that, since I was the chief, uh, trying to bring their, uh, system up, uh, and upgrade. All right, counsel, all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mostly carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then don't go anywhere, Paul. Agenda item number six, resolution approved special event application for the annual nine eleven ceremony to the, because of street closure and amplified sound, mostly to consider. John Bennett, second, Dr. Chapman, discussing. Other question for Deputy Chief, Andrew Tarkinger.
Uh, I just have a quick question. I saw your off, your letter in terms of, you know, when I'm asking on on this issue, um, which you have to, obviously. Is there any way we can, I see in some, uh, communities when they're doing events, they sort of like, uh, use the paint to paint a circle and you have circles that are six feet apart, you know, sort of letting people know, at least you know you can stand. And is is that something we should consider that is to ensure or try to more, let me ensure people are practicing social distancing or is that not considered?
Um, we considered that, but if we painted something on the street, that would remain there for a while and it kind of show people off what it was. Um, typically what, uh, police and fire will do is they will dress right and they will extend their arms and create distance between one another. Um, but also, you know, we with the mask and, um, you know, we will do our very best. I I'm not really sure, um, of the full attendance, um, we've invited, uh, the local fire and 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 police agencies to participate. Um, Superintendent Edwards on the street for a curbs tonight, and, um, he announced that they are postponing school until September fourteenth. Um, the past few years, we've had several hundred high school students attend as an educational program. Um, none of who were born at the time of this event. Um, we had talked and we will do a live stream and and we were working on, um, communication with all the local schools so the students could sit in the classroom and watch the event. Now that they won't be in school, um, hopefully we can use, uh, the schools will cooperate and and relay the message to the students at home um, who I think most will have a laptop or a desktop or something that they can watch the live stream on. And, um, because we didn't wanna give them too time to, uh, bring bring that kind of, uh, number of people, uh, particularly with the schools up in the air about how they're gonna transport anyway. Um, we are also gonna encourage, um, citizens to to watch it via live stream, um, as opposed to coming down. Some will probably come and veterans will come, um, so we will do our very best to make sure that everybody is socially distanced. Um, we will use, um, the street closure and we will, instead of lining most people up in Courthouse Park, we will not only use Courthouse Park, but we will come back through Church Street, um, to the curtain and, uh, and, uh, the west side of of Church Street, um, and take up the road. So we will do everything we can, but, um, I didn't anticipate parking off, no.
Thank you. You answered my question. I just, I mean, this is just a good, uh, I mean, it's well timed and asked, yeah, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Deputy Chief? All right, um, all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mostly carries.
Thank you.
Definitely turned into a wonderful memorial, the site itself and the event as well, it's a great way to commemorate. Um, it's a sad occasion, but hey, like you said, there's people who now are born and are in high school who have never, were were not alive and used to hurt and uh, still fresh and alive and I thank you for continuing to stay involved in Oregon. Oregon will never forget.
Thanks, Paul.
Agenda item number seven, consideration of resolution to do the street closure for the touching up of the black lives matter logo on the summit of on intersection of Main Streets and Court Streets, um, looking for Tim Bennett. Uh, I'm hitting on you. Tim Bennett, can you hear me?
Hi, Ken. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Um, I I wanna give a disclaimer, you know, just because you're speaking and I'm the Portland Voice. Um, I'm Tim Bennett, I'm a community member. I also own, sponsored Tim Door and Outdoor Movies and I'm owner and publisher of the Portland Voice, but right now I'm speaking as Tim Bennett, the community member.
So, Tim, the subject was passed? You wanted to pass things? Uh-uh. Yep, any 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 questions that you have or, um, any of the, uh, the, uh, county council or deputy chief thing, anyone ask? Brian, you need to ask for a motion first.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Oh, you put the heart before the heart. Motion to consider. John Bennett, Sullivan, Dr. Chapman, discussing. I get the hang of this one of these years.
I I just had, start with Bruce Tyler. I have a quick comment in that I support this, um, mainly because, uh, the reason we have to touch it up was because it was vandalized by somebody came through and throughout the day, for some reason, these words bothered them. So a bunch of the day thought they needed to start to rub them out and they were completely wrong and and, um, I I think we have to, I I think we sort of need to approve this for those people about their name and make that right again because that was wrong. It was that individual or it was wrong. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
But thank you for that comment, Bruce. Um, one of the other reasons why, uh, it was actually, I asked for, actually was the next day after the decision. I think that's twenty nine to thirty, or whatever that next day was, um, the reason why is it rained, obviously it's raining. So as Phil Thor and Molly and the two artists, the local artists, uh, high schoolers, um, as they were finishing, it started raining, started getting just a dry as much. Um, and and we had the habit, um, and I asked if we missed him for to, uh, touch it up and heading it right before the students come back, just to be more inclusive.
What's the timeline for the touch up?
Good question. Um, is that cap?
Yeah.
Okay. The timeline, what I, I'm actually, I'm speaking with a professional champion, and the reason, the reason for doing that is I've been wanting to take advantage of anyone volunteering or whatever, I wanted to get a commercial vendor, you know, maybe give like local businesses, and then I would present that, give them it, just as he spoke of like what the qualifications would be, and do it the right way. So with that being said, I just have to agree to him, and he was struggling. So I mean, I'm hoping that they can do it sooner rather than later. If there was an expedite, you know, for them to do it sooner, definitely do it. But I'd rather ask for a further update, you know, if that mine, and then submit it to the mayor at City Hall, and then you can share with the rest of council, and then you can set a year and a half at that time. I know that, yeah, I'll have more to say possibly on that later on, but I want to do everything the right way and make, I want to do everything the right way, so I'm trying to work with everyone to make this happen. Anyone else have comments? So, Brian, can we just, I mean, if we approve this resolution, can you, Mr. Bennett, can just, just again, work on our daily work or whatever, so that, you know, you can, oh, I could do that, so we just, just go that route?
Up to council in terms of how to provide direction. That sounds good. Take a nice day, and I hope that everyone do the same.
Yeah, that's what I go, is just, you know, if we improve this, then we can work together and figure out what's going to work, with the, the police and fire, et cetera, and go ahead and do it. I'm okay with that.
What's happening there?
Well, I just want to, now, part of the criteria you're going to have in the future is the ten items. Is that going to be repaints? Is that going to be part of the ten items you want to talk about in the future? You don't need to ask for a criteria, is repaints going to be in there, or what are you going to do that, you know?
I go, I'm sorry to cut off you there, but with Tim, I actually end the criteria, to be honest with you, I accept the standard in theory. I had the paint, I had the generators, I thought running below it, if it wasn't a rain issue, it would have happened.
No, no, Tim, I'm not, I'm not, if I'm going off, Tim, I'm not saying that, Tim, sorry about that. No, Tim, I'm not saying that you did a great job professionally and all that. All I'm saying is for the future of Brian, as our criteria, criteria, and the future as to, uh, back to be with all of that, you know, we've got to make sure that we're consistent, where in the future that if there is a criteria, someone wants to come back and paint, there is a list of stuff they have to go through with the mayor as to repainting and bringing it back to council, you know what I'm saying?
I totally get what you're saying, and that makes sense. I don't think consistency, and I just don't get it on everything, you know, just like, and I, because I mean, if you go back to watching last season's council, I love the excitement and energy and that discussion that happens, but I like that same discussion and that same energy, for you and everyone else, where someone did sixty thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollar winner. Whether the person's a good person or have a good relationship, both can be yours. Yeah.
All right.
So I'm kind of in a place, just before.
All right, Tim, I'm going to bring this conversation back to council.
Okay, sorry, okay, I'll move myself.
In response to your question, it's only slightly off topic on this, because it does apply to the whole concept, and I think council members, and for those who were not on at our last meeting, have made a recommendation to council, and at some point we do need, my opinion, a policy, and it should be consistent. So moving forward, if you're talking about a touch up for the repainting now, then we will be talking about majority to touch up in the future. So as we are making decisions, these decisions impact not just one thing, but potentially future thinking as well. It's something to consider, and we need to make sure, yeah, we have been and we're working to be consistent.
Thank you, guys.
What are the discussions from council?
I would just, to the consistency point, I think that's a really good point. And I would just ask, you know, does, is there anything with this request that gets impacted by that, you know, or is that more specific if we want to kind of put more screen work around that, sort of the conversation, I don't know.
You're talking about a gentleman, the man?
I believe so, hasn't that happened, that cleaning streets and sidewalks and a policy for that? The number might have changed since the agenda started.
Okay, then what I'm, you didn't have in front of you, but, yeah. All right, what are the discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Most in carries. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everyone. And we'll be in contact when we figure out what's happening. The agenda item number eight, discussion on political signs. There's a couple of things that I wanted to remind the public about and potentially answer questions. I know this is a hot topic as we head into election season, now is a good time to have the discussion. According to city code, we are allowing up to two sign per ballot item, we can have up to two. And the other stipulation is two more, removing signs within thirty days after the election. But after an election, if you are supporting a candidate, you ask that signs are removed within thirty days after the date of the election. Third thing that some people are still not familiar with, we are requiring that signs are not within the right of way. And the general definition of the right of way is a layperson's, a layperson's thing. If you have a sidewalk, from the sidewalk to the curving is what is typically referred to as the right of way. People have the right to walk on, but Rick's giving me, you have a different legal? Just like, the sidewalk to, sidewalk in that part that goes through the road. The sidewalk and the green space between the sidewalk and the curving. Thank you, if I was not clear, I apologize. So that is what we typically refer to as the right of way, when people can walk on sidewalks, even though it's typically private property, and we require maintenance and upkeep of sidewalks. And part of safety issue, and part in attractiveness issue, a couple of years ago, council had to have, had to asking voted when we remove the ability to put signs between the sidewalk and the curving. And there is a potential for a safety issue, people potentially putting in, out of, I have seen signs that have gotten blown into streets, and in particular, those metal spikes not good for cars, bicycles, et cetera, that could get stuck in snow banks, and it's not unusual to expect a little bit of a snowfall, even in November around here. So there's a safety and attractiveness concern, and this is consistent, the signage concerning with other signs, real estate, advertising for against, et cetera, that those signs should be on the far side of the sidewalk. The information that I really wanted to cover this evening was your discussion or question, council. And this was a thing we made a couple of years ago, we simplified, we understand and respect people's rights, express their opinions on who they support. There are regulations in terms of size, if you have questions about the size of signs, and we can discuss further, but typically, the signs that you see out there, the political campaign signs are illegal, and I put up posters or billboards unless it has approval. But as we are heading into a political season, and one that might be, I don't know, maybe a little bit more contentious than some in the past, to be good neighbors, we're asking everybody to, please adhere to our codes with regards to political signs. All right, so I had on my agenda, number nine, resolution approved, community matters event posted by Portland Forward. And now Rick has, Rick had something to say before you call it over. It's just that there are other regulations for other types of signs, commercial signs, the lights, and if you have any questions, that you should contact the county code office or my office, please do it. Yeah, that's a good point. Somebody may call tomorrow and say, well, why do you have signs that are this big on Main Street? And they do vary by district in some cases. And we work very hard to try to accommodate all the different needs and desires in terms of signers in the city. And in clarification, when I said two signs per ballot item, if there is a candidate for a stamp on the ballot, you could potentially have two signs for that candidate. If there's a ballot issue, you could have up to two for that ballot issue. Rick, did I let that one out? No?
It's pretty clear, it's two signs, so you could vote for Tom Michaels and Brian Oden sign, but that's it, two, two total political signs. My mistake, thank you for the discussion.
And then these, every real sign. Done, so busy. Agenda item number nine, in terms of resolution, a community matters event, we are going to, I don't, I'm not going to call for a motion to consider and put it next agenda, I'll ask council to simply take this off the agenda, and it will come back September first for the potential consideration, and the potential date will be September sixth, and this will give more time for planning and organizing. And that would be it.
What were you saying, uh? Are you talking about number nine, Brian?
All right, what do you have for number nine?
Discussion about the name of sidewalk curving streets.
I believe, I believe I have a differently numbered agenda. You're talking about on ours, number ten, consideration of resolution to approve the community matters. Okay, so number ten, you're going to go to next to me, let's go back and talk about painting. So what you have on your agenda is number nine.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like, just to get a start here, I'm not sure where I'll put this, but I got a phone call from a constituent, and sort of wondered where we're at with the process of, if folks want to paint fast to blue, and people said that was okay, and they were just wondering where we're at with that. If you could just let us know, so that I can, you know, I'm sure they're probably listening, and I do support that to do strictly, because I do support it, at least, there's nothing more, there's nothing less, be my support for that, and I know that the others may have similar thoughts on that, but that's strictly for my father, so if you could, if there's nothing behind, I would pick that.
Yeah, and we're going to address this later, we can address it now, as Phil asked as well. So received information from applicants, and it is, I believe, a group, and there's strong support in terms of community, information I believe was dropped off Monday at City Hall, and it was put into our Dropbox, so I did not receive it till today, but I did have a chance to look. I scanned the potential, the logo and requested location, scanned that in, sent that to council, was not planning on bringing it up this evening, in part because council was the last meeting, and we did agree, similar to the first request, to approve it and to leave it up to the mayor to discuss with the applicant in terms of location. But did send that up to you all, basically to keep them informed, and along with two questions, I think, that I'll need to work through with the applicant, one is location, and the other is time for debate or interpretation. So as we're heading towards the fall, it does, and they give some other potential rain dates, we want to make sure we have a date that works in terms of other things happening in the community, and then if that date does not work, a potential rain date works in terms of what's happening in the community, and as expressed, ultimately, it will be least disruptive in terms of streets and traffic.
Okay, thank you, that was something that I appreciate that. Bill, what were the dates that they gave you? What were the dates that they gave you? August twenty eighth for potential date, and then the twenty ninth for the third of four rain dates.
Now, restaurants, are they closed at nine o'clock at night? How does that work? Are they closed because of COVID, or what's the deal with that? Do you understand that?
Well, here's the, here's the bigger concern that I have, is with everything happening in the community, as a reminder, that's the timeline of pre-Portland moving. And we're talking about an overnight thinking drive, on a Friday or Saturday, and the first thinking that was done was done on a Monday evening, and my impression is that a weekday evening, weekday night, there's a heck of a lot in particular in early portion of the week, there's a heck of a lot less happening after hours than on a Friday or a Saturday. And this is not just about the college and college students in particular throughout the community. And anybody that might kind of disagree, I would say, hey, just go down and look at Main Street, let's see, it's eight thirty right now, eight thirty on Tuesday night, and then go down Main Street at eight thirty on a Friday or Saturday. So I'd like to find a time and date that might be a little bit less happening in the community at the same time.
So you're going to contact them, you're going to meet them personally on that, or no?
Actually, I've had conversations with many of the organizers earlier tonight, and we're going to talk again tomorrow or the next day, and work on something that makes sense. You know, I get it, and I can't say you have to do it now, because what I understand is you have somebody lined up to potentially think, and when people make schedules, and they have plans, it's difficult sometimes to move things around. Pretty much what I'm hearing is that they're flexible as well with their dates. Very good. Back to Bill.
Yeah, so, we have a repaint on that too, also, if that happens, if that wears down, that before the actual criteria initiated, to give them a free repaint on that, or no?
I would say that, yeah, we would be consistent. If you, council elects that a repaint is appropriate for one, then a repaint should be appropriate in the future.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
A couple of questions on that repainting, though. Just to clarify, would it also come before council for review, or at this point, because we've done it for one, we wouldn't have to do it for the other?
All right, say again.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what the parameters on the repaints are, you know, are we talking about an unlimited number, or are we just one, and also, you know, do, does any request for repainting need to come before council, or is that part of the original request?
Well, until we have a set policy, we'll continue to bring questions about thinking or rethinking everything to council. As we, the process going forward, again, this is something that legislatively would be beneficial if we say, okay, here's the policy, and here's what the expectations are. Our discussions being passed in terms of how to move forward, I think we've had a strong process. Things went pretty well at the first one, I think things will go pretty well this one as well. And if it's the desire of council to move forward, then we should have a permitting process. And it could be delegated, we could go through the Public Safety Board, if you've got public boards, because
Because not have to be the council that makes the decision. But it is, I believe, in company of council to make the decision about how to move forward with this in terms of future requests. So, now maybe a good time to revisit, and with the talking, I'll say, we can go one by one and talk about some of the situations that are put forward. First one is that the official request comes from the city resident, is something that I recommended discussion. City residents are open? Yeah, that makes sense to me, yeah. It's about community, so, yeah, I don't, I think if you ask enough, then I would say yes, that makes sense.
I agree.
Yep.
Right, I agree that this is too right. In terms of, I agree, so we probably should have a community, uh, distributive, uh, capital of county, and so having others feel that we also. I don't, you know, completely agree with that, you know, they have to have your opinion. And so, couldn't they be a social community?
And then if somebody resides in a town outside of the city, either not requesting for it on town street or a village street, if they reside in a village. Good point. Second thing was official with at least thirty signatures and addresses of city residents looking for community support. Thoughts on that? That's good. It makes sense. Third was the opportunity for a permit fee. We're in debt, so $10,000. But we're not looking to vote this evening, just in case anybody was listening, a little concerned. But we need some direction, so this helps us move along. Well, in the general concept, are we okay with a permit fee? And then, if the answer is yes, I'll ask Mr. Van Doncel for his counsel, if he was there to render an opinion with regard to what fee could be in terms of a rain. I'll check it, because we usually weigh fees anyway. It leads to. Yeah, I'll look, I'll look at some others and see what's comparable. Very good, so we can come back to that, we know if this has support. Number four, design including running, meaning, colors, and requested size must be included. Basically, you have to submit what it is that you are looking to paint. Yes. Number five, applicant is required to hire/use professional painters. Experienced artists can be used, but examples of past work that is simpler or greater in scope needs to be submitted. Looking at the quality of the work. Yep. Number six, mayor will work with the applicant to choose an appropriate location. Ultimately, it is at the city's discretion where artwork will be displayed. Yes. Yep. Seven, painting must be done overnight, and a night to be determined by the city to minimize disruption of traffic. And the rain date must also be selected beforehand. Mm-hmm. Yes. Number eight, the type and quality of the paint must be approved by the city. Right. Yes. Number nine, applicant is responsible for blowers to see the drying process. Okay, yes. Yep. And maybe I should switch nine and 10, because, no, no, this would be appropriate in terms of timeframe. Public streets should be reopened by 7:00 AM the following morning, no later than 8:00. Mm-hmm. Just making sure people are clear in terms of the timeframe. And then two more items that have come up, in terms of profanity, hate speech. I think it would behoove us to ask corporations, council to potentially investigate the craft language. That would eliminate the opportunity for hate speech.
I would say also, anything that's, I don't, maybe this falls under hate speech, I don't know. But anything that's a violent nature, anything advocating violence or something of that nature as well should not be allowed.
Oh, I'm gonna assume that the silence is passive agreement? Repeat that again, Bruce.
I don't know if this falls under hate speech or not, but I would say anything that's advocating violence should also be excluded. It should not be allowed. I don't really have a legal definition of hate speech. Where the tip of my finger, so I could say if that falls under hate there, but anything that's gonna advocate for violence, you should be able to say no to that.
Right. I would think our esteemed legal counsel would be able to word that correctly, include that in.
Yeah, I agree.
And we'll need to work on the wording to make sure we are clearly defining. So, Rick, a little bit more work for you. And then the last would be the issue of the question of touch-ups. So the question that came forward today, and it was unfortunately a small weather event that negatively impacted the painting for the first logo and council is approved. But going forward, under what conditions or what are the stipulations for the painting that has already been approved and done for it to be touched up?
Well, mayor, we also have to remember that, maybe that's why that vandalism was able to occur, because the paint wasn't completely dry, but it wasn't just because the paint wasn't dry. And that person intentionally, you can see the time marks, spun out on part of that sign to try to destroy it. So, you know, I think that, that condition should take into account, and we're looking to, you know, please look at repaints. Uh, you know, I don't think we're gonna say you get to repaint this into, you know, forever. I mean, for countless generations, it belongs to the useful life, and the paint has worn off. As I said, I don't, you know, those are some things I think we should tie top of it, but I would, I think there's some unique circumstances, and vandalism being one of them, where they should be allowed to probably repaint it. That's just not fair.
Bruce, I agree with you, there should be a shelf life and whatever is painted. It cannot stay there forever, so passively, as you say, a repaint once allowed. Hopefully, they won't, you know, won't be destroyed by vandalism, but we should be able to allow nature to take its course and be ready to clean off. We cannot be allowing constant repaints. And I would even look at something as far as down the road, or as far as not having the same message painted again. One time for, say, one message, whether or not it's Black Lives Matter, Support the Blue, or whatever. We can't be having people come back and back and back, saying, "Oh, I want to paint this again." Because it would just get out of control. So I would foresee a look into no more than maybe repainting a lot of lots. Whatever the condition is, whether or not if it doesn't dry and a thunderstorm blows through, or vandalism. Anything like that about one repaint, and then after that, let nature take its course. Point information to council, Bill Carpenter lost his connection, I have called him, and he is on my cellphone. So he is here verbally. I believe, since we cannot see him, if there are issues in terms of voting, he will not be able to vote, but he is here and might contribute to the conversation. Captain Carpenter, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that with, you know, what we just approved for the previous one is due to a rain on that. So I've been thinking through when our repaint circumstances are allowed is important. You know, it seems like we've set the precedent that due to impound of weather, we might consider it. But are there other cases, vandalism, in one of them as well?
Well, maybe we should even also look at a timeframe, please. Ah. Right, this is, this is going to look like a old record for this, isn't it? Again, what's the shelf life? If something is painted well, and it's dry, and then two weeks later, the thunderstorm does wash some of it away, do we allow repaint that much later to two weeks? Or if somebody does come by and scream or tires through it two weeks later? Vandalism. I would think, again, maybe we put a timeline on it, no more than, you know, a repaint, no more, within a four-week period. Or that until we could be having people wanting to repaint on numerous times over numerous months. So in terms of conditions, unforeseen circumstances, ID, weather, vandalism, and timeframe. About that open ended? Sounds a little indirect.
I mean, actually, we can, we can probably, we can take some of those things as a case by case basis, and take a look at the same scenario and circumstances, and make a reasonable decision.
Shouldn't case by case, so there's a case by case precision, you know?
Can y'all hear Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, case by case, I just, I don't know, you know, it's just a matter of circumstance.
But I'm firm on that, no more than a one repaint.
Yeah, I agree.
Only one?
Yeah, one.
Hey, Mayor, a couple of councils time to jump in there.
Oh, Rick?
Just a point of clarification when we prepare this, relative to the requirement of blowers. I think there are other agents that could dry things than we use them for our street markings. I think we need to have a lot of alternatives there, to make sure we don't make this cost-provoked, provocative as well.
Responsible for speeding the drying process, for a speedy drying process?
It's effective.
Yeah, I play the pay the big bucks, effective. There you go. That sounds like a lawyerly word.
Don't try this at home.
So with the information discussed today, also potentially excluding, we'll need some, I think, a preamble, how do we exclude work by public works, utility markouts, et cetera. So let's, I'll have something for council to consider at the next meeting with the draft of this. And it'll be formal, and it can be up for vote, for going to resolution, but we would, I guess, Rick, would this need to be a local law?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be a two-meeting process, I'm envisioning then. At the first meeting in September, public hearings for public input, and also a strong, rough draft of what was discussed this evening, and then potential vote. I believe the next meeting will be September 15th, in terms of an official city policy. Does that need with council approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bill said yes, because it could not be. It could be. Rick answered, hand up. Mr. Van Doncel?
And just, just so we're clear, we are approving the Back to Blue in advance of the local law. Against the local laws going to apply going forward, in that there's other applicants, other than Black Lives Matters and Back to Blue.
That everybody's understanding? Yes, council approved two weeks ago, so that the request for Back to Blue has received permission. And Rick, you know better than I, if you were to receive another request before the law is passed, I'm assuming you would need to address that in the way that we addressed the first two. Alright, very good. That would address, do we want to talk about sidewalks and curbs? No sidewalks, no curbs. You mean no painting, no painting on sidewalks or curbs?
Right, so.
Alright, Bill, you there?
Sidewalks, sidewalks, curbs are allowed, I think curbs should be, I think, again, consistent with that. It should be the same as streets, application, different cities, your application process and all that, with the curves, all the same protocol as you play with, with streets, maybe it's a simple, you know what I mean?
Mr. Van Doncel? Bill, the only exception I see in that is the thirty signature system. For a homeowner that wants to spend his curbs, then we would have to carve out something different for a curb.
But, I think, the street property, state property, I don't know, the street property, the property, the property. It's all the same protocol, and, like, we said, we come to different, uh, areas. I think it should be a lot easier to compare that, or to all of those, no, street property. When you have a town, it's a lot of, uh, you're scared there, and that's what we go about that, and that's another discussion.
Captain Carpenter?
I believe at our last meeting, we asked Mr. Van Doncel to do some research on the sidewalks. Is there any update on that, given the sensitive nature of the way ownership is?
Yeah, I gave the mayor's office a memorandum of law on streets, curbs, and sidewalks, and the constitutional parts of that, what to consider. If I did not get that out of the council, I apologize, and I'll forward that along at the conclusion of this meeting. It's pretty straightforward with everybody, this city is relative time, place, and manner regulations. We cannot regulate time tanks. Sidewalks are clearly more of a private light. Curbs are more, have more steady involvement, and the same with streets. Both curbs and streets, you have to be concerned that any regulation that you apply does not interfere with other city requirements. Curbs that demarcate parking lots, or parking areas, when you wrap up the line. The same with where the, where the sign goes, the streets go with the sign. So for example, you can regulate what colors people paint their curbs, so that it does not interfere with parking regulations or other safety concerns of a particular curb. The only other thing that applies to law three is that nothing that they apply can degrade the purpose of the street sidewalk or curb, because we have, we have determined that the preservation of those things is a city, an important city factor. So those are the sorts of concerns that I address in that memo, but it's pretty straightforward stuff.
I don't have a problem with people thinking sidewalks, they want to, the curbs, I see what you're saying, in terms of maybe you have to strip certain colors, but I don't, if people want to, you know, I'm looking at this from an optimistic point of view. Maybe people want to make things more colorful around town, in terms of what they want to paint on the curbs, and think of that nature. And the sidewalks, to me, and I don't want to make the owner sign a property on the two. I don't think that, I don't, if someone wants to paint a sidewalk, they shouldn't need, that's right, they shouldn't need signatures, or they shouldn't need a permit, they don't have to have a professional painter, it's a sidewalk. You know, it's your sidewalk. They, they pay just several hundred dollars to have it repaired, it could be a good thing. So I would, I don't want to get into this. So I, I would, I don't want to get into business of telling people what they're gonna paint, unless it's really stumping blatantly, again, you know, advocating violence or, or hate speech or something like that. But I don't, I don't see that happening. So that's what I'm, I'm very confused.
Are there any safety considerations with painting sidewalks as far as just using them throughout, you know, people with different abilities?
Well, you probably would have to, that's a good point, and probably have to, you know, it can't be, uh, uh, like Rick was saying, degrade the sidewalk or make it slippery, but I do do a lot of walking on this town, I also do it too. And then some of the sidewalks are deteriorating to the point of never sidewalk, where they're uplifted, you could trip all over at night, because you see, uh, weird things like that. So, you know, there's a lot of things that, I, I would consider less than ideal when it comes to sidewalks. I don't see how clean them would, would have any kind of real safety, unless they put something on there that causes it to be slippery, you know, what it can be, or something like that, maybe. So that's a good point for that, um, but...
Visual, too, I, I would imagine, you know, that it's harder to see, or something like that, I'd be much more.
And that's one of the issues that I had raised at the last meeting, if you are going along on a sidewalk and, uh, if it is painted, and imagine now not a solid color, maybe I wasn't sure, but if somebody does something that has multiple colors, and throwing the potential issue of cracks or one block that might be slightly raised compared to others, it's a safety issue.
And with those safety concerns and what we just heard about the, the legal end of things, is there a way to, on a set frame, though, so that you can kind of walk that line?
I follow what. Uh, council, in the interest of time, if, um, we come back to the sidewalk and curb stuff the next meeting, and I will ask for a vote in terms of if you would support the ability to paint sidewalks curbs. If the answer is no, we move forward. If the answer is yes, then I ask you to be able to, uh, I'll, I'll put forward two criteria that is similar to what we're talking about with roads, but obviously somewhat different, and will do what we're doing with roads, but for sidewalks and curbs. And it'll just be a meeting or maybe two behind what we're doing with regards to roads. How's that sound? So I'm asking you to have a definitive answer in your mind, how you would vote next meeting, if you would approve or dis, disapprove of painting a curb, and the same question for sidewalks. Further discussion? None. I've got on my agenda COVID-19 response. Is everybody else having the same, just on the noise, guys? Very good. Um, so we are doing some adjustments within City Hall on the second floor, and, uh, looking to have the opportunity, if appropriate, to open up the second floor for customers who have been, excuse me, in tax season, which means there are people who aren't in their taxes, but there are people who come in and they want to pay in person. We are working to accommodate everybody as well as we can. We have kept the door closed in the interest of being safer. You know, we continue with what we're trying to do, excuse me, that we are not just keeping everybody safe, but keeping people safe, and effectively executing our responsibilities here on the second floor in City Hall. Um, any questions otherwise with regards to COVID-19 and what we're doing within the community? And I'll thank Bruce for reminding me, I did have an agenda item that I wanted to add, and it's a, uh, resolution to authorize the mayor's transition agreement with the Chamber of Commerce to continue the hanging of banners on light poles on Main Street. I'll ask for a motion to consider, please, Pat, you're second, Jack, you're second, discussion. So I'll start off our, uh, current agreement, what happens is the Chamber of Commerce, if you walk down Main Street, there are a number of, uh, banners that are on poles, and they advertise good businesses, and they also have some other things that help promote goodwill and positive thought within our community. And the agreement with the Chamber, for every pole banner that they hang, uh, there will be thirty dollars that comes back to this city that will be put into the maintenance of Main Street. And it might be flowerbeds, it might be some other tasks, but the idea is that the money that comes in, or the permit, if you will, uh, that goes back into downtown. So questions, comments, council? Uh, Captain McCarthy?
I just wanted to ask if the construction or any of the changes for the DRI would impact, uh, this agreement?
So we are having some discussions, and we must round for the banners. Uh, Rick, you're second, looking at approximately eighteen months, and we think that will time pretty well with finalizing destruction. Because remember, you gotta do the underground stuff and then the above surface stuff. Uh, so this current disagreement that is proposed, I believe will expiate at about when we would be having the destruction about potentially loopholes and what may happen with that. So very few questions.
Yeah, I, I, well, besides, I just want to thank the Chamber for continuing this position, I think it adds a lot to our industry. So I, I, I support her a hundred percent. I'm glad that they're willing to, to leave the party, they contribute to it, so thank you.
Very good. And, uh, for the record, Bill Carpenter has rejoined the meeting via Zoom. Welcome back, Bill. Further discussion? Hearing none, although it appears to say aye, uh, oppose, most in fairness. Reminder, anybody that was interested in terms of public comments, you can put your name into the group chat, which is practically now mislabeled because that will come directly to me and to nobody else.
Hey, Mayor, do you, do you have that item on our agenda? I know I have, uh, it's outdated agenda.
What have you been, I've not covered.
Do you have any, okay, I'm quoting forward.
Consider that, the discussion about the, um, Community Matters events, but I will, Bruce, if you would like to contribute, or if there's anybody else that would like to speak in terms of, uh, meetings and what's gonna occur.
No, you, you, you covered a little bit, but it's a great idea that, uh, April has proposed, and, um, I, I, I hopefully this is going to be, yeah. I look forward to discussing that, I think I could, yeah.
All right, so then we'll give another couple of seconds to see if anybody signs up, um, and then two items that I'd like to address while we, uh, one is city budget and community matters. Feel free to reach out to your elected representatives, because I can tell you that not just the city of Portland, but what we found in the United States, the challenges that we're being faced with by the pandemic in terms of the financials. Uh, for us to be able to continue to operate at the level that we do, it's putting extreme duress to following our meetings. You've heard it, and you will continue to hear it, because there's no easy decisions with this. But we, I support, and I believe several on council also support, some federal assistance for local municipalities, and also to our state, because these are not just needed, but also very strongly desired services. And we have taken great steps to cut back on the budget that was very friskfully sound to begin with. And we are in a position where we're still trying to do as much as we can. So if you read and you hear about what's happening at the federal level, and in fact, that there is no current agreement, and yes, they are talking about individuals, unemployment, and how that's impacting people individually, it does impact you as well with regard to the, uh, impact on city services. So for us to be able to continue to do what we do to the level that we are accomplishing fast, we need some form of assistance. And we're working on everything we can. I did have the opportunity to talk to Chuck Schumer, one of our senators, last week. Uh, he was advocating, and I hope that other elected officials are getting the same feedback. The other thing that I'd like to address, running the call time people for public comment, I will ask that, I'm not just reading your names, but also that you fully reveal yourself in terms of putting the video on, so that we are as close to an in-person meeting as we are when we do meet in person. And sometimes it's a little humorous to read some of the names of people who log on ads, but I, I think most are aware that you can change your screen name, you can choose what your name is when you come into your meeting. However, in the interest of transparency and functioning of government, when we allow some public comments, people are present when we have an in-person meeting. And we can see you, you can see us, and we are asking, I can counsel myself, that if you have call time in street, that you will feel the same courtesy in terms of disclosing your real name and your face. Thank you. And I'm looking for, but Stephen Schumaker, and generally speaking, as a reminder, I, I, all the comments we should be addressing, council as a whole, and Joe, issues that the council can address. Hey there, can you hear me? Uh, yes, is that Stephen? Yeah, very good.
Hi there, I just wanted to, um, since I've been listening, I wanted to just comment about the budget. There's been, uh, the council's been talking about how the budget is leaning this, uh, this year. And, um, I just wanted to kind of put out there, uh, a hope that the, uh, like, if you've been watching the news, um, a lot of cities have been talking about defunding the police, and I'd like to hope that our city wouldn't consider defunding our police because they keep us all safe. Uh, I just wanted to let the council know that, uh, hopefully they could, if, if that came up, they would consider not doing that. Love you, Dave.
Very good, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Second. Any further business to come before the council this evening? Well, we'll close out, I give a final thought. A lot of times, uh, see, there's quite a bit on social media, we choose to discuss our opinions, and a lot of times we think about how things make us feel and what it takes, uh, for us to be comfortable. But I would urge everybody to also remember that one of the safe things, when we do do things, we are also manipulated by others. And one of the things that helps keep communities strong is that fear and compassion that we have for our neighbors. So as we choose to say things and to do things, also think about not just why you support what you do, but also the potential impact it has on, on the neighbor. All right, a final thought for the evening. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn by Captain McCarthy, second by John Bennett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
See you folks. Take care.
And we're good, say, over to everybody, September first.